On Far West Drive is half R one fifty.
Ready.
They put in the sewer system, everything else.
Great.
We have split zones on our lots.
Okay. I think this is everyone, actually.
Steve.
I thought I saw Steve.
Steve's not with us anymore. He resigned.
This is Steve. Okay, so we're going over landscape standards. So I did some homework for everyone and printed off the neighboring, you already have some of it, the neighboring cities and their landscaping requirements for commercials. And.
I've done the very same thing.
So I did Plain City, Marriott Sladeville, Pleasant View, and then I did West Haven because actually West Haven has a very in-depth uh, one that I actually really like, so.
And I've got Plain City, Pleasant View, I've got everything from what around us.
Yeah.
Harrisville, North, North Ogden, Pleasant View, Plain City.
I pulled North Ogden's and theirs was awful, so I just nixed that one.
Well, well, I don't, I don't like the idea of going anywhere near West Haven.
Well, and I say it from.
Because of their history of blind views.
Well, I say it from once we, and we can turn to that one first. They just have a very detailed and it's thawed out, so we can maybe even shoot to that one first.
Can I make a comment here?
Yeah, go ahead.
I saw on the news recently that the state legislature is passing some rules and regulations with regards to landscaping.
Hmm, meaning what? No water requirements?
No, basically that you can't tell them, you can't tell homeowners what they can do.
Oh.
It relates to homeowners association and HOA's requiring X, a minimum of X amount in turf.
Right, no more than fifty percent.
Their hands on.
Okay, no more than fifteen percent?
Fifty.
Fifty, oh, okay. Which honestly, most cities already have that.
I understand. I just wanted to bring that up since we're talking about landscape ordinances.
Yeah.
And landscaping, but the legislature is passing some.
That'll be interesting to see what happens with secondary connections because, I mean, in our, all of our neighborhoods, I have a couple that are zero scape and they still have to pay for their secondary water connection.
Yeah.
Do they even use any water then?
No, it's because of the water provider.
Yeah. So they don't use any of it, however, they still have annual dues and they still have to hook their home up to it or, or have, you know, it service their lot at least.
Okay, yeah.
So do you want to lead Lou a little bit?
Well, let me tell you what I've done. I've read these several times and you don't have the time to read them right now. And so what I've done is I've distilled from them a series of considerations that we ought to think about. And there's good parts to several different cities. There isn't an ideal model in any of them. And so I thought, we can wade through every one of those if you want, or.
Well, I already nixed a bunch of them. I just did like the meat of it.
What, what I have done is I've got a list of what I call considerations for review on other municipalities. What I would suggest sometime, not, that's not the first thing, is we just go through these and consider what we would sort of like to do relative to each of these. Then we dive into those and get templates for warnings.
Well, and can I remind everyone what ours is? Cause it's very simple. So our landscape for, just so we're starting off on them, they're like what? So we, all we specify is plant material, an area not less than ten percent of the site as depicted on the site plan shall be landscaped. However, landscape areas in excess of fifteen percent requiring irrigation must be connected to secondary water. Suitable landscaping may include shrubs, trees, lawn, or similar landscape materials as prescribed and approved by the planning commission. In addition, the park strip between any public street and site, whether existing or proposed, shall be landscaped. Then we have screening, so landscape prescribed by planning commission to accomplish other requirements, da, 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 hold on, let's see. There's really nothing other than it needs to be in addition to the ten percent landscape requirement, maintenance that it obviously be maintained by the owner or tenant.
I.
That is literally it, yeah.
Which is good. One of the things you mentioned though is, is the park strip needs to be landscaped. But yet we're having people rip that out.
Well, and we need to.
Well, and, and there's a whole, there's a whole.
It has to be zero scape.
Yeah.
Right.
But.
Right.
Yeah, agreed.
And they're, I'll just give you, one city basically says, in the park strip, you don't put plants. You zero scape the park strip.
Sure.
And you zero scape other parks in the property.
What is the difference? Can you explain that?
Zero scape is simply gravel and no irrigation, no plants, no attempt to landscape. Unfortunately, that's what a lot of our developers have got away with in Far West because we've been asleep. Zero scape is where you actually landscape it and you put in plants that are drought tolerant. They either grow without supplemental water, or if they do have supplemental water, it's a drip irrigation system with minimal water use. Okay.
Usually when they have zero scape, they have a plant list, like Pleasant View has a plant list that you can choose from, that are drought tolerant, don't require drip irrigation or anything like that.
Here, and these aren't any.
I thought I was so prepared for this meeting and then Lou just blows me out of the water. Gosh!
Well, no, I just know what I saw.
I know, right?
I know, I was exactly reading through all that stuff.
Yeah.
And, and I think the, the documents you and I have given them, we will go there and get passages from them.
Exactly.
But before we do that, let's just sort of decide in a general sense what we want to do before we create a draft out of that, okay?
Yep.
So this is just a, some considerations. My first thing is just a statement. If you review those cities, and did you look at Marriott Sladeville?
Mm-hmm. I thought one of theirs, I thought theirs wasn't too horrible.
Well, the, the, the body, the body statement was three sentences.
Oh, yeah. But they had quite a few, um, oh, that's yours. They had at least something, yeah, it wasn't, it had a little bit more body than ours at least.
Yeah, well, not much.
Yeah.
So my, my, my comment is the, the requirements.
Oh, Marriott Sladeville.
Okay, uh, from almost, from very little, we're one of the most minimal of all to
The minimal.
extreme specifications where they tell you the species of tree, the size of the tree, the size of the shrub. And I think, personally, I think Far West ought to aim for somewhere in the middle.
Yeah.
We're, we have very little in ours now. But I think in addition to talking about water use, we've got an opportunity to make ours much better than it is.
Yeah.
So that's the whole purpose of this. One thing that comes up clear in reading these others is if you're gonna use water, it's gotta be secondary water.
Yeah.
And so however we word it, culinary waters is, is off the table now.
Well, and Bonavista will not allow you to use their water unless they don't service you. And that's a special occasion for them. So yeah, I think that should be stated.
To them, and what they told me is in new construction.
No.
It's a no.
Well, as long as they're not, because there are some places, so like in Harrisville along eighty-nine, uh, Pine, sorry, Pineview can't cross the railroad tracks. So they don't have secondary water. So they have to get a special exception from Bonavista or do a zero scape or things like that. So they're, it won't bother us.
When I talked to them, they said, we, you know, for new construction, we're basically not gonna grant exceptions.
Yeah.
For existing scenarios where, you know, they're kind of caught in between a rock and a hard place on a case-by-case basis. Since we don't like exceptions, I think the segue is just to say if there's gonna be water use, it's gonna be secondary water.
Yeah.
So that one, I think, is, is pretty straightforward. Some of them come right out and say culinary water is prohibited. Not a bad thing to say.
So we're saying secondary water, so if they don't have it, then they are not required to have anything that is water.
No, and that, there's another one.
You take last week's meeting where that, that guy did not have secondary.
There is one, and this is, let's talk about that right now. There's one of these that clearly states you must have a secondary water source.
Right.
Period. That's in their ordinance. Uh, my question to you is, do we wanna do that?
Can we do that?
I don't know on that piece.
Well, they've done it. I can show you one municipality that's done.
I don't disagree with that, but what I'm asking is can we do that?
Okay, but then how would it affect the application from, the applicant from last week? How can he be forced to run the water line from how far down the road?
Part from at all about giving where they're at and giving what's been allowed around them, you know, it's pretty hard.
I just wanted, and I made a point in the meeting, I wanted to make sure that he wasn't just saying, oh, I don't have, I'm not gonna go spend ten grand on a water share.
Because it's not feasible or convenient.
Right, exactly. I want to make sure that that, there's a line there. However, if it is not there and the lines don't run, that is within, not within his control.
Could you, could you say, uh?
I wouldn't make secondary water, well.
No, how about requiring it if accessible?
Yeah. If, if available.
Or if available.
Yeah.
It's available, yeah, I can see that.
So don't give them any wiggle if it's there. They can't weasel out of it.
If, if the sewer's there, you can't just go have a septic tank.
Okay, what about, what about irrigation? What about water shares? Are they, what they?
Yeah, they would be required.
Required if they have. So we might, we might want to add in there, if water shares are available, they need to purchase water shares for that? I mean, I don't know.
Well, yeah, but hold on, let me answer his question. So for that, in order to hook onto the secondary, they have to turn water shares in, so it solves itself.
Really?
Well, if you've got water shares, you could get secondary water. You, you've got stock.
So that's where I, that's what I was asking in the last meeting was, do you just have water shares and you don't want to use them? Or is it really not available to you? Because there's two different things, because you have a developer that says, oh, well, I'll go pocket and sell my water shares for ten grand apiece and I don't want to hook onto it because I'm just gonna gravel. When it's already available to them, that's different than it not being there.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that.
If it's available, you'd be fine.
I would agree.
That makes sense. It really makes sense.
Yeah, I like that. Okay, sorry, now go.
They, they can't get it. I mean, we shouldn't hold their fire.
But if it is available, they need to.
Can't hold their fire, shoot them.
That's what I kept asking, but we found out he couldn't. The line actually is not there. Yeah. Okay, sorry Greg.
Pretty straightforward anyway.
Encourage, uh, stormwater harvesting. Rainwater?
Well, we are, they already. Okay.
No, you, you, you used to, but you don't have to anymore.
You don't own the water.
Yeah, you can store.
I thought you could, you could only do a certain amount though.
You still have that, but it's like twenty-five hundred gallons now.
Oh, okay.
Right.
That's a lot.
Yeah, that's a lot of, so you get a lot of water. Yeah.
You don't have to have a lot of surface area there.
Right. No, so I'm, you know, I think it's something that we could encourage.
Let's stay on landscaping. Let's not open that yet.
On landscaping.
I know, but that's a.
If they don't have secondary water.
Really, to me, that's more part of surface area. That's.
That's, you type.
That really isn't landscaping. It's more what's coming off of your service.
Use it to irrigate, use it to irrigate your landscaping.
That's true.
I think we can encourage it, but not require it. We encourage the use of preserving capturing rainwater. I, I don't think so.
It does, it muddies the water.
It kind of just.
But I, I like that you're forward thinking in that.
I think that's one of the things that's gonna come in at us here regardless of whether we want to or not, because the state rules and regulations are thrown out.
Well, that's.
Which is stormwater.
That is a secondary water source. Now, for us to say you've got a catch of water. But anybody coming in the door, I think the vast majority of the case are gonna have access, one way or another, to secondary water.
This is the first one I've ever seen.
Let's put it this way, pressurized secondary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's be clear on that.
Yeah.
Pressurized secondary water.
Yeah. Cause otherwise they can't do anything with it.
Right.
Yeah. But you're, so, and we have to remember too, this is related to commercial. So you're not gonna get a farm piece coming in on a commercial trip that doesn't have most of the amenities. So you're not gonna, that piece of it, you're.
Yeah, I've just never seen it before since we've been in.
I like where you're thinking, Greg, and I think it's a little forward thinking for where we're going right now.
Have you ever seen it?
I like it though. I like it.
I know, that's one of the things that the state's really pushing.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, there for a while, you, they wouldn't.
Is that that triangle that's?
Because the water coming.
And if you look at the propane place right south of it, there's no landscaping, there's no temperature.
There's a little bit at the construction side, right?
Boy, we're.
It's like between the sidewalk and the building.
But I do think there is like two or three trees that. So it is kind of rough if he's gonna mow it all down and not keep those existing.
And in fact, there's some of these ordinances that talk about it.
Well, I was gonna say, did you notice most of the, well, some of the good ordinances, they did. They were very, very on trees.
And they also said if they're existing trees, leave them alone.
Right. And if you take down a certain amount, you need to replace them.
Exactly, yeah, so.
I like to, to make sure we keep moving. I like the secondary water as long as available and that will solve itself because they'll have to get a will serve letter, letter at the time of site plan and things like that. So I like if available.
Sure, I would agree with that.
It's pre-need and it's.
Yeah, I like it. Okay.
Uh, the second thing in reading over these is some of them do include the detention pond as part of the landscaping. Some of them exclude it. In fact, the wording in some of them will say, you have to landscape everything that isn't the building, parking, storage facilities, and the detention ponds. So the detention pond goes both ways. Some call it part of the landscaping, some don't. And some of them say, instead of giving up percentages, they just say, you have to landscape everything that isn't parking, sidewalk, building.
And I don't love that.
The detention pond, this kind of goes both ways, so.
I don't love leaving it that way because then you don't meet a percentage. And all of a sudden they've said, oh, well, it's easier to add five more parking stalls here than make it green space.
Right.
Or open space or whatever.
You, you, you could end up having, in theory, no landscaping.
Sure. I mean, with detention, you can also go underground.
Right.
You can go in there at the doghouse or so.
Yep.
So that's actually the next.
So what?
But what about detention ponds? Do we want to exclude them as part of the landscaping plan? Because.
It depends on what, I mean, if you have a large detention basin, landscape that thing, it's gonna be pricey, but.
But could you fall back on your percentages? If they make ten percent without the detention basin, then they're good and they can gravel the detention. However, if they're using it in their percentage, it needs to be landscaped.
The, the detention basins that aren't green patches aren't zero scape, they're zero scape.
Right, zero.
So I'm gonna tell you that they're really not part of the landscape.
Right.
However, if they needed it for their percentage.
Well, now that's an interesting thought.
Then they would need to landscape it.
But what about the pasture grass that they were talking about when they came with the?
Boy, I'd avoid that like the plague.
I'm just saying.
What it does is it's down on volume and per capability.
It's, it's.
But you have, that is residential essentially.
Sure.
We have to stay in the commercial sector. Because they're at most, like, the detention basin at Golden Eagle is zero scape. It is also fenced and not visible.
So, so the real issue is, well, what to do with the detention basin? A and B, is it part of the landscape plan? Is it part of, what are we trying to accomplish with landscape? To me, landscape is beautification, okay? It has nothing to do with putting rocks on the ground.
But you think some of them, that last guy's site plan is detention basin is in the back?
He has one up front, which will be visible, he has one out back. And that one out back that you don't see? I wouldn't care about. But the one up front that you're gonna see.
Well, but that's not even a detention basin. So you, you notice the trees were on those, he has two detention basins on the east and west side of the South Fountain. There are no trees in either one of those. Which makes sense to me. The, all the rest of the perimeter, he's put in plantings.
Yeah.
So in, in my view, I would almost, I don't think requiring landscaping on an detention basin makes sense.
Right.
It, it doesn't because, I mean.
Why would you put trees and shrubs?
It reduces your volume.
Well, and landscaping could be essentially grass. It doesn't have to be.
Okay, good point. And I've seen a lot of detention basins on grass. Here's my take on that. Turf is not gonna be part of this plan.
Right.
Because it violates every water conservation principle in the book. So we're not gonna be asking people to put turf in a detention basin, or we're.
But if their detention basin have, well, I guess if it's, it's commercial, nevermind.
You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So, and I can show you all kinds of wonderful examples of detention basins they're using for soccer fields and the curb. But they're pouring water on them to keep them green.
And other than that, they're big.
They're huge. They're, we're talking.
We're talking, you look at what we looked at last week. Okay?
Tiny. And a lot of times, like, you're right, it goes underground.
Irregular, and they take advantage of odd corners and shapes.
Right.
I still, I still like that if it is part of, if that detention basin is making up your ten percent open space or landscaping requirement, it needs to have something aesthetically pleasing in it. However, if it is not, then.
Okay, what would that be? Help me out.
Well, I'm thinking like gravel with water tolerant shrubs. I'll have to bring pictures. So in Pleasant View, we did a subdivision off of eighty-nine and they actually, for their LID requirements, we did something called inlet swells. And what they do is they're wider park strips and you plant in them, um, drought tolerant shrubs. There's no irrigation to them. They collect the rainwater, they collect the runoff, and it allows the plants to grow and catches it so it doesn't, doesn't go into the system.
Bio swells.
That's why it's called bio swells.
But help me out.
But, but sorry.
You're asking a plant to survive no water or too much water. That's kind of a hard take on.
But they have a plant list of the, of the plants that you're allowed to use.
Great.
Here's the thing.
Oh, that's.
But I can tell you.
If you want to see what they look like, you know the Auger Temple?
That's.
Go on the road just west of that. Grant Avenue. It's got a sidewalk, a bike lane.
Oh, yeah, I like that.
That's what we went after. That's exactly right.
You have the travel lane and then in between the two travel lanes is where they collect all their stormwater.
That's called the, the bio swell.
Bio retention swell.
I'll show you.
Gravel?
No.
Planted with live plants.
Granted, I think theirs survives a lot more than most places because.
Well, you can always, you're like American Fork and all, there's backed up and plugged. So you have to be very careful with when you're doing these.
Right, I just, do we want to make detention basins simple?
I would say detention basins need to be made simple because number one, they need to be maintained.
Yes.
If you're putting a lot of plant life in them, you're gonna, whoever has it has to maintain that.
Well, and it, oh yeah, detention, yeah, yeah, you're right.
And, and I just think the variation between flooding events that will take out everything but rivers.
I like that, really.
I'm telling you, it doesn't look like that other places.
No.
No.
I'm telling you, there's something, it doesn't always look this good.
No.
And those are narrow.
Yeah.
I'm talking about a basin that.
Right, this is different, yeah. But there are shrubs that don't.
Bio swell that everybody could look at if they wanted to.
But there are shrubs that are, you know, but maybe it's, it's a a decorative rock and it's not just a, or something, you know what I mean?
Rock, I would agree with.
Okay, now, and that.
It's not just gravel being poured into detention basins.
One of the thing I've been thinking about while you've been talking, if they require plants down, their weeds are gonna grow.
I just don't think plants in a detention basin.
Yeah.
No, because, because my thing, if we require plants in those detention basins, there's gonna be room for the weeds to grow.
And how are they gonna maintain that to keep the weeds down? Because the weeds are gonna choke out the.
Here's, here's a question that I have for you. It's something we should, we should really think about, okay? All the drainage off of these sites is gonna go to those detention basins.
Right.
Right.
Now, if you get the hydrocarbons in there, if you get silt in there, that all needs to be cleaned out.
Right.
Okay, so now you're ripping all those plants out to put back in. Or to rip them out and then have nothing.
But you get the bio sealed in there, weeds, weed seeds are gonna come through there. That's gonna be a weed patch before you know it anyway.
They're all weed patches.
I know.
They're all weed patches.
They have to maintain it though.
Yeah, even.
You've got a zero scape. You go in there with the herbicide and it's done.
That's true.
You're not ripping plants out, breaking the seal.
You want to be careful with that too.
Even, even on Midland, even on Midland Drive in West Haven, they've got those right off of Midland. And they've got zero scape, like, you know, nothing in the rock. And over the last five years, weeds are growing.
But that must be a city-owned one.
It is a city-owned, yeah. It's, it's West Haven. I understand that, but still, we're gonna get weeds growing.
But that's the only way. There isn't another way to do it.
No, there's not.
Yeah.
No, except.
All of those attention.
You set the herbicide and maintain it that way. To me, I'd like that idea better.
I would say zero scape, decorative rock.
Yeah.
If it's, if it's visible.
Right, yeah, maybe something about if, if visible in front of the building.
If it's not visible, it's their problem.
If it's back behind the building, I think just don't gravel.
It's their problem. Who cares? Yeah.
You need to treat them, personally, I think you need to do them both.
What do you, okay, help me out.
From a stormwater's point of view.
Decorative rock on both of them?
Yeah.
Doesn't make any difference.
You know, it's easier to just say, it's gotta be decorative rock. So don't go down by.
Than saying above the.
Sure.
No gravel, I mean.
Right.
Pay the price.
Sure.
Okay.
I like that.
Okay, so we, we, we've all agreed in terms of what's put in the detention basin.
Yep.
So can we just set detention basin aside as part of the percentage requirement for landscaping?
To be included or not?
No, given that we're not landscaping it.
Right.
Let's just say, you, you have a detention basin, the engineers will say how big it has to be, and we're telling you the detention, detention basin has, has to be lined with decorative rock. That's it. And then in addition to that, you have to have X percentage of landscaping.
I would agree with that.
I would agree. Are we doing decorative rock completely? Even at the base, they can't have like a gravel mix? We're doing a whole, all decorative?
Do, I mean, decorative rock, that's, it becomes.
Some of those are, do all those decorative rocks, uh, comply with that?
Not necessarily, but the thing is, is you need to look at, I mean, the thing is, is what I think is a decorative rock.
Right.
Lou may not.
Well, but I can sure tell the difference between rock that's got some colors and something that you know is.
Also get.
Cause some of those are big, some of those.
Well, you can't put rock these down and seal it.
Yeah, you don't understand what I'm saying.
I know exactly what you're saying. But if you were to, if you were to put in, say, like, three D six inch cobble?
Yeah. Cause some of those bases ha, kind of have to be that cobble.
Yeah, they want the cobble in there.
So we could do something like decorative rock and a cobble base or something. Cause I don't think you could do decorative rock with a base.
You can require low, low, uh, oh, what's the word I'm looking for? You can require cobble in the bottom.
Yeah.
And then on the, on the walls or the slopes, okay?
There we go.
You could get your landscaping on your slopes.
Yeah.
Although we're not gonna call that landscape. Here's my take.
Sure.
I don't care a whole lot about the rock type in a detention basin.
Sure.
Because we're not, that's not part of our landscape plan.
Right.
That's a place where water's stored hopefully, and we'll tell them that they have to keep weed free. Well, we can put that in. And, you know.
Well, and a lot of cities will allow just the cobble stone or whatever. However, it is usually fenced.
Yeah.
Most of their detention basins are fenced. However, they usually get sent to the city too. They become city ones.
If it's a city, what it has to be. If it's a city, what it has to be.
Yeah.
For safety reasons.
For safety.
Yeah, I understand.
Hence why it's not as bad to have the cobble, because you're not looking at it as a decorative thing. But, yeah.
So what do you think as far as the, the composition of rock in a detention basin?
I don't think it matters, personally. I think you're putting.
Detention.
The detention basin, right. I don't think it really matters, because who's gonna drive by and say, look at that beautiful rock in the detention basin?
I'm kinda leaning that way.
We're gonna exclude the detention basin.
I don't think it really matters.
It's just whatever rock.
Whatever rock is.
You've gotta put rock, water.
I'd rather they put money in the decorative rock in the park strip than they do in, in a.
It's a detention basin.
Detention basin, which is gonna be.
Who cares?
Throw the water anyway.
Well, I do think it needs to be a cobblestone. It can't.
I agree, yeah.
It's not, it can't be pasture grass, but.
And, and clearly, detention basins aren't put on the entrance and right around the perimeter building. Usually, they're in the back forty or the corner. I mean, they're.
However, there is, and I can pull up the site plan, I'm doing a site plan for a heavy equipment place in, uh, West Haven, and their detention basin falls right in the front of their building, and they are landscaping it. It will be a.
Well, then what if?
Peace. However, that counts in there. They have chosen for that to be part of their landscape.
Their percentage?
Yeah, because that is the front.
But they, but they, does it say to require?
Require what?
That to be part of the percentage of the.
It has to be because they need both. His, their detention falls right there because it's the lowest part.
Yeah.
However, it is the front of their building.
So it's, it is.
So they have chosen to landscape it.
If you wanna really be critical, you can require underground collection galleries.
No, we're not doing that.
And landscape over the top of them.
We're not doing that. That's where the developer in me comes in, you jerk.
I'm just, I'm just saying.
No.
I'm just saying, that's, you know, that's an option that you can throw on the table.
Developer's face if we told them that.
Yeah, I can tell you what it'll look like. It looks similar to what lines just look like. No.
Well, let's say this, in reading some of these, and I would like us to have some language.
Sure.
Not only giving them percentage, but telling them where on the lot we want the landscaping. For instance, near the entryway, adjacent to sidewalks.
Sure, sure, sure.
As a barrier between that and a residential property. There's several things we need to discuss.
Right.
But I think that would get at this issue of placement of the detention pond.
But you have to.
The detention ponds should be the first, that's one of the first things engineers are gonna design, and then design everything else around it.
And he's.
It has to be the lowest part, exactly.
You can't get water to run a pill yet, I've been trying for years, but it doesn't work.
In that respect, because a lot of times, once you do the detention basin and you place your footprint on the building, you can only move so much. Once we get to parking ratios, and then you've got curb and gutter in your sidewalk, I hesitate to make it that specific, because I think we'll run into a lot of people that are like, well, in order to meet our parking ratios, we have to have it to the front of the back of the sidewalk, and now our landscaping is.
Not that, but I think we can require landscaping on the street side of the property.
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
That sort of thing.
Yeah.
But then you just bring up the question that we only require landscaping in the front anyways.
Well, I, I, later on, we're gonna be talking about the sides, and, cause I think it depends if it's in the back, that's a lot different than if it's in the front, or if it's a budding a commercial property, that's different than it's a budding a residential property.
Sure.
We need to, we'll hammer that out.
So the building I work at, it's landscaped only in the visible areas. Out back, there's no landscape being.
See, and I like that.
Well, it's, it's kinda like down two thousand. Everybody, we wanna have the front looking nice, so when people travel through, it doesn't look like a junkyard.
Money.
Right.
Or water or anything on stuff that no one's seeing.
Right.
I agree.
So given that, the percentages, if you look at these ordinances, range from ten percent to thirty percent. The thirty percent sounds high, but that does include detention basins.
Oh, okay.
So ours is a twenty. We're excluding detention basins.
Are we at twenty or ten? I thought we were at ten.
It's ten.
No, it says ten.
Oh, yeah, ten.
Excuse me.
I'm like, twenty is, twenty is residential.
I, yeah, I don't think we oughta change that.
I agree.
You know, I, it's, we're on the low end of things. I certainly wouldn't recommend.
The way water stuffs.
I certainly wouldn't recommend making less.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay, so we agree?
And our average commercial site plan is one to five acres. So ten percent is a, a significant amount of their site plan, do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
We're talking about small site already.
And you are, and I agree with you, you're in favor of not doing what the others have suggested, and that is you landscape everything that isn't parking, building, storage.
Yeah.
So we're forcing them into a certain minimal amount that has to be landscaped.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, it just gets hard, because then for, especially for LID and things like that, you can only, you can't, some of it just doesn't work. It's not feasible at that point.
So our ten percent state, minimal watering, zero scape, uh, we'll get the language out of there, but they all basically say the same thing.
Yeah.
So that's, that's enough.
Yep.
Um, considering specific tree and shrubs, sizes and species.
I didn't like that.
Uh, I think we oughta not go there.
Right, I am not, I don't know.
I mean, they've got.
I barely know what a rose is, to pick a list of things that allow the use.
Boy, you've gotta have this species, there's gotta be this DBH.
Pleasant View is, Pleasant View is very, very detailed.
Well, so is North Off.
Yeah.
I do like that you brought up that if they cut down a tree, that they replace it somewhere, you know what I mean, like?
Well, it was based on a percentage.
Well, here's the thing is.
You're gonna chop one down, you might.
You're gonna wanna, if you're gonna do that, you're gonna wanna make, base it on the size of the tree they're removing.
Yeah.
What is it?
Well, and there's gonna be a certain percentage.
Or the little suckers that's actually a tree. Who cares?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
This is what.
But if we get one six inch caliper or larger.
Yeah, one that's been there.
Now, this is a significant tree.
So this is what it says, it says, where removal is necessary, mature trees shall be salvaged or replaced on a three to one basis. Any trees listed in the prohibited shall not be removed.
So there's, there's, there's two issues here on replacement. One is an existing tree.
Yep.
And I like some of the wording that they've.
Yeah.
The other one is if the tree that you plant dies, you are obligated to replace it. There, there's, and I think we oughta have language for both of those. Do you agree?
Yeah.
And, and they're pretty, they're pretty consistent, you know?
Trees, and I mean, maybe you're more the plant, trees take a lot of water to start. That's where I hesitate.
I would run into the problem, Lou, okay? To my knowledge, we don't have code enforcement.
Yeah.
Okay, we don't bond.
We bond.
We bond for trees?
Oh, not for, but you will have a year warranty, yeah, of landscaping's included bonding.
No, wait.
You're gonna.
Expect that.
What?
What are you talking about now?
So, are you gonna bond for the, for those trees?
They do, yeah. They, they bond for one year of the landscape, yeah.
So, and then you have, so from the time it's filed, you have one year, a one year warranty.
Yep.
Okay, and it's bonded with a cash bond.
Yeah.
And land it red in or whatever it is they do.
Yeah.
Okay.
You have one year, and then exactly that, if it dies after that, it is what, however, this is, that, that's relative to a residential subdivision or something that's getting turned over to the city.
Sure, but that's typically curb gutter sidewalk.
Right, but I'm saying in a tree that they would still own it, so technically, they would be responsible for it.
Sure, which is fine, and I have no problem with that.
So you have no, I hope you have no problem if they plant a tree and it dies, they're responsible for replacing it.
No, I didn't. As long as we have the ability to hold something from them, so what if they don't?
Well, even if there's no.
I don't know that we'll do that.
Let's put the rule in the books anyway. Someday, we may actually have code enforcement.
I know they're working on it.
Same as we do with these uses, where you have certain provisions, when we approve a site plan, you have a certain provision, and we approve that landscape plan.
Sure.
And you fall in that, in that line.
Like I say, as long as we have a, a, a action to require that that tree be replaced.
Yes.
Whether it be through code enforcement, whether it be a bond that we can reject.
The way you're doing it now, I see how it won't be a bond.
Right.
I mean, it will for a year, but then, you're right, nothing will, will.
I would keep the wording simple.
Yeah.
If the tree dies, you replace it. That's.
But what are you doing?
Better wording here than that, but that's the essence of it.
Based on approved site plan or approved landscape plan.
Problem you're gonna have though is if that tree dies in two or three years, who's gonna make them replace it?
Well, I'm saying, we would never even know.
Right.
But the, the fact that it's in there, some people will.
Right.
Sure, yeah.
And the.
Especially a budding residential.
We've got, we've got some leverage to go in and say, replant the tree.
Yeah.
Because that was a condition.
Yep.
Now, and it could be a neighbor coming in and complaining to the city.
Yep.
And they may take him into court. I mean, I, I've seen court battle service stuff smaller than that.
I'd like to take my neighbor to court.
Yeah, they trust me.
Well, and hopefully, they would wanna keep a good relationship with the city, so they would see that on the books and try to.
You can do something where we always talk about that there's something having to maybe do with their business license.
I'm just thinking that same thing with.
There's, there are, there's leverage, there's leverage.
Yeah.
We got some sticks.
This is giving us leverage.
Those are all things that we wanna make sure that we have.
Yeah. Which is why it is good to set them up for success in the beginning with what we choose to do with our landscape to begin with.
Are we in agreement, though, let's not go down the road of specific tree species and sizes?
Yeah.
What is a golden maiden hair anyway?
I think one of the things, if we're gonna require, here's the question, here's one thing that I would bring up. If we're gonna require that if they remove a tree, that they have to replace it with so many trees, if we go that route, then we need to determine what a, what a, uh.
Ratio.
A tree is.
Yeah. I don't like that.
Shrubs are, no, I wouldn't, I would just say you can replace it with like kind, you know, or something to that.
I don't like that route, because what happens?
Disrub or.
What happens if you get a, you get a lot off two thousand, and it's mostly trees, and you're taking down half the lot to get just open space?
Where do you plant the rest of the trees?
Taking down a bunch of Russian olives.
It's like, you just, I don't think it's.
Those are weeds, by the way.
Yeah, they're Dennis.
That's the weed, that's clearing the lattice.
I don't love that piece. Especially related to commercial. If you're talking residential and you're trying to preserve, and you have twenty percent open space to do that in, to plant the, the same amount of trees that they took down in a ten percent open space?
Who's suggesting that?
Well, I'm just saying, I don't, I don't like the, the tree for tree or that ratio.
You said that.
No, I just, no.
I said that, but.
No, no, I'm saying, if you plant the tree, if you put the tree in place.
He's, you were talking two different things, okay?
I said it, I said if there was an existing tree, but I'm not talking about like if you've got like a forest going on. You don't need to replace your forest.
But I'm not gonna replace an exist, existing tree with the root system that's been in there for half of a century.
Yeah.
I mean, it's underneath the sidewalk and the foundation.
I heard, I heard the number that if you remove a tree, you're gonna replace it with three trees.
Yeah.
A three to one. Wasn't it remove three and put one?
I don't agree with that.
Wouldn't that be a one to three?
What I'm saying is if you're gonna do that.
You know what? I would, there's some language in here about that.
Yeah, that's so.
I wouldn't mess around talking about removal of existing trees.
Yeah, replacement on a three to one basis.
The thing I was, the thing I was making the point of is if you're gonna require somebody to plant three trees, cause they removed one, we're gonna need to define what a significant tree is.
Yeah, I don't think we go down that route.
I don't wanna go down that road, because I've been down that road.
Well, we're not gonna tell them the size, we're not gonna tell them the species.
Nope.
Um, so I would just say that the simple way is just when, when you put plantings in, and they die, you replace them.
Right.
That's.
Well, I know why not.
So that can be its own little item, too, at the bottom.
Yeah, and some of them have words.
Yeah.
Could you put some wording in there that said this does not apply to existing trees that need to be?
I think we just leave it out.
I would leave that out.
Yeah, now you just touch that.
That gets very complicated.
I know.
When you start talking about, you know, one that's got a DBH of three, of feet in diameter.
DBH.
Diameter of breast height. That's, hey, we don't know much about.
Davis behavioral health is what I know that one for.
They go, breast height, they measure the diameter.
You go, you can go twelve inches off the ground.
Yeah.
Cause now you're measuring the root base, so. But no, in my neighborhood, the CCNRs had specific species that you couldn't plant.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we usually do that.
So.
Because they're invasive, they're things.
That's up to the homeowners and the developer to determine.
And we.
Well, remember, this is commercial, too.
We can question that, but let's not go from almost doing nothing.
Yeah, to doing too much.
Yeah, the extreme.
Look like Temple Square. I mean, I think somewhere between.
That comes into who's a.
I, I, I think lower, lower end, yeah.
Yeah. I agree.
So, then species of trees and size, what about the spacing of trees and shrubs? Some of them talk about that?
I don't care, as long as it looks nice.
Are we gonna require some trees, though? So what if they just fill it full of shrubs? I, I'm just like worried, like.
Well, and that's.
If it's like you just got shrubs everywhere, and it's like.
But how do you?
I like a little mix of it.
But how do you do that? Because everything that they're doing right now with the water conservation, there aren't trees allowed in.
It depends.
Park strips, you're not allowed to plant.
So much where it's at. You're not gonna plant a tree adjacent to a building.
Yeah.
There's lots of, of considerations when it's adjacent to vehicle parking.
Sure.
Or the entrance and everything else. Given that we haven't said anything about it, maybe this cut through, we don't talk about trees. We don't talk about the spacing either.
Yeah.
We're not gonna talk about size, species or space. Is that?
I agree.
I see it nicely done.
I disagree with that. But I mean, if you wanna make it simply, you can say you need to plant five shrubs or two trees.
We don't know.
And then they've got a six foot.
Can't choose.
No, but that's not specific.
And they've got a six foot stretch.
They don't put a single tree on that.
I don't disagree with you.
I agree.
One way it's simple.
Well, it's for complex.
They end up with fifteen percent landscaping instead of ten, and all of a sudden, they've got the same, they have different.
Sure.
Well, too, I think I'm thinking different trees, too. I'm not thinking like those ginormous trees. I'm thinking like the ones that you put on your.
Like a park strip.
Like the park strip trees, those small ones.
Well, there's two things. There's.
They still grow big.
Shade, shade trees are the monsters. There's others that don't get that tall, and, and. I read lots of these, and some of these municipalities get very specific. They tell you how to prune it and how high it has to be. And I'm just thinking, we're going from near zero.
You don't wanna muddy the water.
I think this time through, probably keep it simple, and then if we wanna enhance it.
Use the KISS method, I like that.
Well, two, let's put it out there, see how people.
Well, we can review.
Do it, and then we can review it.
Site plans, if you don't like what we see on site plans.
Saying, if you don't like what you see, you can make suggestions.
Step up from them putting grass. Step up from them putting grass.
Exactly.
Giving us a.
A very big step up.
Isn't it in Mapleton where they're cutting down a bunch of trees on the street because they're tearing up all the sidewalks and everything like that?
Yeah, and.
This one whole street, this one whole neighbor has gotten all the trees removed because the sidewalks are lifting and.
So we're talking strictly commercial here, right?
Yeah.
So we get a big warehouse in here, Amazon. Okay, we get an Amazon or a FedEx or something like that in here and the islands.
Yeah.
Okay, we gotta think about all that. Otherwise, we're gonna have the asphalt jungle now a reason, you know, the heat for not only that site, but all the property owners around it.
Well, then you think too, the water serviceability of those islands now, most of those commercial associations are tearing their trees out and things like that in those islands because they already can't keep their grass alive.
Sure.
They can't water in the island.
There's no reason we can't at that point in time start looking at the bio stuff.
Oh, yeah, definitely. And you might, yeah.
And there are tree species that work very well that are drought tolerant. But I'm talking, I'm talking, I'm not talking like the last one that we just looked at.
Talking one set, like.
I'm talking like the, like the Amazon over here around the corner.
There's a picture in the, in the, yeah, like this, where you have the actual islands and you have trees in.
Have your parking lot out there.
I just hate to be that specific now and then be in a situation where we're like, oh, gosh, we require trees in there, but we don't have any water for you to service them. So what's gonna happen now?
Well, but I.
I'd rather it look nice with a decorative rock like we've replaced out here.
I don't wanna make it too easy for them. If they can put in a drip irrigation system, I'd like to see that happen.
And I, and I'm talking, I, you know, it should be maybe over a certain amount of parking stalls or however you wanna do that, okay? I mean, because I come from where I come from, we dealt with large properties and, and large developments. And they had some very specific landscape requirements for not only decorative trees, but for shade trees. For the parking lot to keep the ambient temperature down in the parking lots. That's a big thing for a lot of, a lot of
Bigger air.
quote unquote, environmentalists, okay? But that's a big thing, the ambient temperature, because you get those asphalt jungles and they raise the temperature of not only that site, but sites right around it as well are affected by that temperature. So if we're gonna start looking at stuff like this on a large development type thing, it's something we need to think about as part of this landscape work. This is all I'm saying.
Well, and, and I, we will probably go through multiple iterations of this.
Sure.
My, my thinking now is start a little on the conservative side.
Lou, I don't disagree with you.
Fully understand that a year or two from now, we're gonna revisit this and probably tweak.
It might be something that gets revisited almost annually based on the water changes.
And based on what people come to us for their site plans.
But we're looking right now at a site where potentially we could have a large parking lot on Watson's properties.
Yeah.
Okay, the one over here behind, uh.
Well, and that will have a fence too.
Right.
That one behind Maverick, it's the three commercials. That would be.
So they've got this, uh, the potential, the surgical center. So we're, we're gonna have some larger projects. Now, depending on the size of the buildings, there may not be a lot of landscaping there, but we're gonna have parking.
Right. And how to alleviate that?
How do we, how do we leave that and, and mitigate some of that, you know, asphalt jungles?
Let's start with putting this base together. I think that's what we're gonna start. And then exactly that. And then through the, yeah.
I'm seeing that out. Can we, let's drop down a couple, three bullets to consider where on the lot the landscaping should be placed. This kind of is relevant to a lot of things, you know?
Sure.
And I've, and you'll, you've seen this, you're reading.
Yeah.
Some of them say if it's on the back side, forget it. If it's on a non-visible side, forget it. If it's on the front, they're much more concerned about that. And if it's a budding residential property, they're much more concerned. So I think somewhere in our language, we, we, the rules aren't the same on all four sides of this commercial property.
If ours is a budding commercial, don't we, or sorry, residential, don't we already require a fence, right? Privacy fence or is it just?
But some of them, as you've read, maybe required a.
But is our current?
Well, I wait.
Privacy?
Yeah, we. We wrote that with John Watson's property over here.
One in residential, one in commercial and residential's the same?
Well, to me, to me.
I ran into this, that they have a commercial and a residential buffer and they make you put a fence and then they make you landscape a five-foot strip in front, in, inside your fence where no one's seeing. I would hate to see, do that. If we already are requiring a fence, I don't think we need side fence.
No, I don't either.
We did that on Watson. He's got a, he's got normally a fence.
Well, that's because.
It's got a buffer.
Well, we were making, you're talking about the, the M1.
Yeah, over there by associated.
Same thing with the C2.
Just, just.
Cause that was more for lights, wasn't it?
No, well, there's lights, but there's also landscape back there as well, everything else.
Calm the waters.
No, I understand.
That's why that was there, you know?
No, I get that.
And I, I, I don't have any problem.
But there's nothing that says we.
Tougher on M, M1 than C2.
But we could run into the same situation with a C2.
Well, C2 is gonna, the, the thing to think about, we got C2 peppered between residential all along 2000 West.
Right.
So we better, we better think very clearly what we wanna have.
Yeah. Well, and if there's already a privacy fence, I would hate to see us waste landscaping on the sides of a building that are covered by a privacy fence. I'd rather see it go into the front that is visible from patrons and.
So your thing is if the privacy fence is there, that's good enough.
I, yeah.
And I don't see any reason for requirement on the back block. And, and if, if it abuts commercial.
Well, the only thing that would change that in my mind is if there's a large parking lot in the back.
Large parking lot, they all, yeah.
Of moderation of the heat thing?
Right.
And to have some sort of islands turnarounds. But wouldn't that solve itself because, well, no, they could just.
Islands on the border. Islands are, that's an interior thing.
Right, but if you had, say you had a building here and in the back they have a hundred stalls for employees, that's all fenced in. I could see that. You have basically a hundred percent surface area in the back with nothing.
Let's go back and talk about separately what we're gonna do with islands because you've got some points.
Yeah.
I'm just looking at the.
Sure.
I would say it needs to stay in the perimeter.
Landscape borders, I wanna open up the whole scope of it.
One of them said it should be landscaped on the front side and any side that's visible to the public.
I like that.
I really like that language.
Yeah. Do we also talk about sidewalks too? Does that have to do with this too?
Islands and sidewalks are kind of, we need to talk about that.
Require sidewalks, cause you know that one, one 2000 West where it goes like sidewalks and then it just stops.
Our public works, our public works standards though require the sidewalk. So they have to have curb gutter sidewalk. Mm-hmm, yeah. Manscaped.
Okay, so we in general agreement on that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, so.
We got nine minutes just to FYI according to what we're gonna.
Best one to work session, continue on.
Okay. What is included as part of the landscaping, we may be able to dispense with that easily. Some of them include the sidewalk and the detention pond and so forth. I think we ought to include the xeriscate that's planted, that's, that's really.
Sure.
So we, we don't, we're not talking about sidewalk as part of the landscape. We're not talking about.
To me, those are improvements. They're not landscaping.
They're enhancements to the hard surface.
Well, yeah, they're, they're your public improvements, not.
Okay, consider landscaping adjacent to residential property, not, we're not gonna really mention anything there. No specific requirement.
Right. If, if our requirement really is that it is fenced, which it is, right?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
And we, we've kind of already talked about where on the lot the landscaping should be placed, but we still haven't talked about islands and sidewalks and that sort of thing.
Sure. And I'm talking large parking lot areas. That's where my concern is.
I like language, use species adapted to desert conditions. That's just smart.
Yeah.
Without talking about a species list, you know, and I, some of them, I part of this, some of you said.
No, I agree with that.
And the last one I've got on your thing is just upgrading far west requirements. We're doing that. We're going beyond where we are. I've got no grass. I'm assuming everybody's in agreement with that.
Yeah.
Special requirement for park strips, can we just say park strips are not to be, they're not, they're xeriscate is what we want park strips?
Oh, we don't allow grass anyways. They have to be landscaped.
You wanna have decorative rock in park strips?
Oh, agreed. Agreed. Yeah. I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
The thing, one of the things we might wanna leave a crack open for, just somebody wanted to run a drip system out there to do some small plants.
I feel like that could, the park strip could be landscaped.
Sure.
Just not turf. It needs to be in.
So the parks, the, 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 the park strip could be part of that ten percent.
Sure.
I agree with that.
And it just can't be in turf.
Right.
Yeah.
Gotcha. In fact, that's probably one of the best places to have this buffering effect to stop on the buildings. Uh, special, special requirements you've got, consider what is adjacent, and I, we've all got the interior, rear, rear street residential, we've done that. We want landscape, islands, landscaping islands. We haven't really talked about that.
And we'll talk about that. I mean, we can talk about that at another time. Cause I'm talking on large parking lots, okay? But we're gonna have to take a look at that because what's a parking lot for? If it's for FedEx where they're bringing eighteen wheelers in all day and parking them there, doesn't do us any good.
Can I make two points? So I want everyone to go home and take Lou and I's packets and, cause these are all the surrounding ones, so it has some good ideas in it. But the West Haven one, because that's the only one you didn't pull, the only thing.
Sorry for that, I just.
Well, no, no, no. I, and I know why you wouldn't pull it.
He's done such a marvelous job with, with the low income housing.
Which makes their ordinances so specific. They have some interesting details in it. And this is one that I thought was in, two that I thought were interesting quickly.
Good language from all of them.
Right. So they actually have a completion of improvements in their landscape for commercial. So that they cannot get a C of O without the completion a hundred percent of their landscape, which kind of filters itself anyways with warranties.
I really liked that law.
But that was something like that. It was exactly, shall not be completed prior to the assurance of a certificate of occupancy.
In other words, have it, have it as just as a part of the building.
So it's in, it's not, but you can do something.
Same thing.
Yeah.
I think North Ogden does.
Then the only other thing here on theirs is it goes into the fact about, um, standards that basically preserve and maintain ownership and the integrity of it. And it says, in the event the open space or required landscaping improvements facilities are not landscaped or maintained in the manner consistent with the approved site plan, the city may at its option cause such landscaping or maintenance to be performed and assessed at the cost of the effective property owner.
Love it.
I, I really like that.
That would be a, a turning question.
Put that in.
Well, that would be an attorney question to see if we can actually do that. However, there's some good standards of how they're holding these people accountable.
Sure.
Which is very different than some of ours.
That's good stuff.
One question I have for you though.
Yeah.
On the occupancy thing?
Yeah.
What do you do with today? If somebody wanted occupancy in their building today, what do you do for landscaping?
If they what?
Wanted their occ, if they were granted occupancy today.
Yeah.
Cause their building was finished.
Yep, but their landscaping was not.
And there's two feet of snow on the ground.
See, and that's where we would have to put in some sort of weather restriction and North Ogden's, like one of them has it.
Has something about, yes.
That if your, if your building falls within certain months, it needs to be completed within six months.
That would be something we should add.
Yes, agreed.
I think it's North Ogden.
Yeah, one of them had, similar to, you remember when we redid the residential landscape requirement, we did that. So we could follow suit with that. Yeah. No, I agree.
I don't think they ever got one of your, your big packets.
There you go. So I would say.
Homework.
Next, yeah, homework is the packets we handed out. I think we have a really good start. And then maybe Lou, do you have time to kind of take the notes that we talked about today and?
What I'm gonna do is take all the things we've read on, and I'm just gonna create a bunch of bullets where I'm borrowing language.
Yep.
Sure.
We, we can put it together and, and we can, I, I just want, okay, this is where I think this should could be said, and this could be said, and this could be said, okay?
I can get on the Far West website or the Far West mailing list. I could be part of this, but I can't go on that.
What's the Far West mailing list?
My email for Far West City.
You. That's a you problem.
She finally got me there.
Oh.
Because I had to replace my computer. It's relatively, she will have to talk to some guy and he'll give you a code.
Yeah.
And, and if you've got that code, it pops right up.
I called Lindsay, she gave me that guy. I called the guy and he says, I'm busy, I'll call you back. Never heard from him.
Dropbox. Do you have Dropbox?
I have Dropbox.
But the Dropbox doesn't have this communication.
Yeah, it doesn't.
Next time we'll have a work session on the same thing we're bringing back our homework basically. Does that make sense to everyone? Okay. Life's changing when you have homework now.
Homework, Greg.
It was the great one too. Well, I added it after this. I was like, why is it not work, in a work session? When I went to the gym, I was like, oh, it's a Russell.
No, that was my fault a little.
Well, we went to eighth grade and I was like, I mean, I think she washed hair, but I'm not gonna be like.
See if my computer still works.
Janelle, you look fabulous.
Oh, yeah, I'm listening. Okay.
What's that? I'm in sweatpants, sweatshirt. At least I'm not wearing a Utah Jazz hat.
He just didn't want to be reading that and simulating at the same time.
Well, that was my thought. I didn't wanna have to pull things out while we're in the work session. It was good. And then it took them a whole week to.
Very good.
See, which is, yeah, good.
Thank you.
I don't think you want the copy.
Um.
See if I know what it says.
Gonna do the pledge?
Sure.
Oh, gosh, I gotta write down names. Greg. I, you are Whitney in my head forever, probably.
We've only been, we've only been on the council for like two years.
Shut up. I suck at names. Lyle, do you wanna do the prayer?
Sure.
Lou, Brandon. And.
Got your own assignments.
Oh, good. I need your name on this.
No, just remember it.
I think it's Whitney every single time. And it's not Andrea.
Well, I called Andrea Lindsay today.
It's that one time I called you Whitney. Okay, we're ready. Okay. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. We're gonna start with a pledge by Darren and a prayer by Lou.
Please repeat the pledge of allegiance with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our kind heavenly father, we're grateful to convene as a planning commission. We express gratitude for the opportunity to live in a free country and to be part of a community that is growing and, and we appreciate the friendly nature that we have among our citizens. We ask thee to please bless us that as we consider the items on our agenda tonight, that we will be clear-minded and be sensitive to those needs that will best serve the citizens of the city of Far West. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Before I ask Lyle, but that's okay.
Yeah.
Oh, I did?
You asked me and I said yes, and then you called me Lou. Then you called me Lou.
Okay, sorry. Moving on to public comment. One struggle. Do you, anyone in the public?
Didn't we say that at the end? Did that change?
And I moved it to the top, yeah.
That's cool. I just, I think it's a good change.
That was the one thing that bothered me. I don't know why they needed to wait till the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. Are you on the wrong agenda? Yeah.
Public comments, three A.
Two minutes? There you go. Okay, report from city council.
First, I apologize again for missing your work session. I looked at the agenda and then I was like, great, seven o'clock. So, um, this is the report from February sixteenth. And we had a report from the planning commission. We approved business licenses. We re-zoned the John Watson property at eleven hundred North 2000 West from R115 to C2. Um, as recommended by the commission, we approved the site plan for Matt Montano at thirty-seven seventy and thirty-seven sixty-two North Higley Road. Um, and we declined reappointment of Ted to the planning commission, although I do wanna say thank you to both, um, Steve and Ted. I know they're not here, but they've done a great job and, um, and also to all of you, thank you for stepping up and, and doing a great job. Um, we confirmed the appointment of Geneva Blanchard to the chair and Lyle Earl, Earl as co-chair of the planning commission, so thank you. And we set a work session on March second to discuss personal policies and procedures for educational purposes. I think that's just with city council. Um, and then we approved minutes and bills. And then I was supposed to report to ask you to start working the commercial landscape ordinance, but it sounds like you did that. So thank you for being ahead of schedule. So, and that's it. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you. Okay, the, the one item on the agenda. Uh, recommended city council appointment of an alternate member to serve as a full member on the planning commission. However, and Mackenzie might have to guide me on this, I think now we have two positions because Ted was not reappointed. So I know previously Darren had expressed interest about wanting to be. Um, Brandon, do you have interest in wanting to be a full member? Okay. So I think now we can recommend both of them to the city council as full members. So, yeah. So does, or, or we need a recommendation, but yeah. But we need two spots, not just the one that was originally on the agenda. Does that make sense?
It does. Somebody needs to motion.
So I think we just need to make a recommendation to the city council to place Brandon, or sorry, Darren and Brandon as full members on the planning commission.
So, okay, and it's just.
Am I allowed to appoint two or am I only allowed?
I think we can put two up there.
I think we can too.
I think we'll be fine.
Yeah. So they just need to be named.
Yeah, if they've been named, we might have to be complicated.
Right.
So it was a typo, it's meant to be plural, right?
Should've been members, alternate members.
First.
Yeah.
So we need a recommendation.
Okay, I move that we recommend to the city council the appointment of both alternate members to serve as full members of the planning commission.
Second.
Motion by Lou, second by Greg. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Um, approval of the minutes stated February second along with February ninth. Um, was there any? I had one typo, but I figured Lou had already fixed it by now.
I didn't, I didn't fix the typo. I, I, I went and made some other changes to the earlier one, so.
On the February ninth minutes, just at the top where it says Steve and Brandon were excused, not was excused. Am I wrong in that?
You are absolutely correct.
Okay. I don't know what bothered me, but everything else looked great. And I want to commend you on the minutes being that much better. They've been really good. So I appreciate it. Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
To approve the minutes.
I move that we approve of the minutes dated February, February second.
And February nine?
And February nine.
Okay, motion by Darren.
Second.
Second by Brandon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, report on assignments. Brandon?
Um, I did attend the, over online at TDR seminar.
You got in?
While I was working, while I listened to it, but yeah, I went in and listened to the two hours. I didn't get any of these slides that you sent out.
Yeah, we got the PowerPoint.
But I listened to it. It was really good.
Yeah, okay. Well, Lou and I, we, I didn't see the email until about three o'clock. And I sent it to Lou and we tried to get in. We sent the, we, we registered, but it never sent us the Zoom link to get in and anything, so.
Was it good, Brandon?
It was really good.
What's one thing you learned?
Um, well, they kind of just explained places where it was going good and places where it was struggling. So I just listened to basically, there were advocates for doing it, TDRs where you just take a portion of your land and use it for development and then you take a portion of it and you leave it to be basically green space for, I thought it was interesting. Interesting way to kind of meet both. Well, one of the things I also I remember from them is they were talking about how a lot of people are moving to Utah and it's, they're moving out of places where it's just packed with residents and how Utah's so beautiful and they wanna keep it that way. So I was like, hmm, like that.
Good. Lyle?
Hey, just a couple of things. One of them is I met with Katie this afternoon for a few hours and we're making some great headway on that outdoor ground. It's a rarely, it's like a, the worst nightmare of a final exam. So anyway, we expect to have at least in part submitted for review next by Tuesday. And then we're hoping, it's due on March seventeenth, but we'll have it easily submitted by the tenth of March, a week before. And also on this training that we, that Brandon reported on, um, if it's okay with Geneva, I'm going to contact Liam and see if maybe we can get, if I can somehow get privy or we can all get privy to the, these trainings, you know, four hours before.
I loved that he, I was gonna say, I love that he sent it out.
Yeah, I was excited he did too. But the problem is, is that, is that, like I said, Lou and I tried to get in it, we couldn't. And so I took it upon, I. is that, like I said, Lou and I tried to get in it, we couldn't. And so I took it upon, I took the liberty, if it was okay, to download the slides and send them out.
Right.
And if I'm not mistaken, aren't we required to have, what, eight hours a year?
Four.
Four hours a year.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll.
So yeah, that would count.
Yeah, it should, yeah. So if it's okay with you, Geneva, I'll, I'll talk with Liam and see if we can't work something out and I'll just kind of, I'll just kind of follow up and see if we can make sure that everybody gets notified of these much sooner than four hours.
Yeah, and then it would help, exactly.
Yeah. Get those hours in. Plus, you can't go wrong learning about this stuff, cause it's always changing.
Right.
So, okay, I'll work on that, yeah.
Yeah, that's great. Uh, Lou?
Um, I reported during the work session, but I would like to bring up something else, which I think will influence our work sessions for the remainder of this quarter. Our modern income housing, chapter eight. The last item is talking about developing a modern income housing project for residents who are disabled or fifty-five years or older. And in the implementation, it says these proposals will take some discussion and decision will be during the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-three. Any changes will be implemented during the second quarter. So that discussion and decisions for that implementation is to be taken place by the end of March.
Okay.
According to what we've promised. So I would think we need to put it on our, on the fast track on our agenda.
Well, maybe we can do like a half and half next work, work session, or maybe we need to have an extra work session in March.
I.
To discuss something like that?
Given the urgency of this and the fact that we promised the state this, I would suggest we put this as number one and take all the time necessary. I don't know how much time it's gonna take, but, uh, it, it involves, uh, the development. It says the planning commission will also consider creating a new zone for these communities or a planned development overlay. That's no small or thing, so I, I think we're gonna have to work hard and fast to get it done by the end of March.
Well, then I'll change our next work session to start that, and you guys have enough information from today's that we can start, at least you can stay thinking about it, and then when we can reconvene on that, we can reconvene on it. Um, do we have to be directed by the city council to do that, or is it because it's already a timeline in there?
The city council approved this, and this says that we will do it, so I, I interpret that to. The implement, what it says, the, the, the planning commission will also consider creating the new zone, and in other words, we have to have done all of the dialogue by the end of March. The implementation is the second quarter, so I, the implementation isn't the issue, but we have to have pretty well our ducks lined up of what we're gonna do by the end of March, according to what this says.
Well, and I can mention when I report to the city council next week that we are just assuming that because it's in there and that was approved, that was our direction.
Yeah, I don't know how flexible that is, if we can change the timeline, you know, as we say, hey, we don't wanna rush it.
Right, exactly. Well, we can see in the next work session what, how much we have to do from that, cause it may involve some extra.
Well, if, if you read that, uh, consider creating a new zone for these communities or planned development overlay. Our work session today involved two of us doing quite a bit of homework. If we go into that work session the second week in March, without somebody doing something, we're gonna sit around the table looking at each other.
Yeah.
Because I'm kind of clueless as how this is gonna take place. I think we would probably wanna look for examples of how other very similar thing to what we've done with this landscape.
I'll do exactly what I did with the landscape and pull some surrounding cities, not very, well, Plain City does have a patio home ordinance, Marriott Sladeville does not, North Ogden and Pleasantview do, so.
Does West Haven?
Uh-huh. Um, so I'll pull the surroundings and.
And what I would recommend is put it in the commission's hands several days before our work session, so they can all study it and come.
In the, oh, in the, yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
In our commission.
Yeah, because we just put it in their hands today.
I can have that out the first of this week.
I, I just wanna make sure that we.
North Ogden has a very good patio home ordinance.
I'm sure they exist, we just gotta decide what we wanna do.
Airskill may too, since they've got a lot of patio homes in Airskill as well, so.
They've deleted their ordinance, actually. Mm-hmm, yeah. But there are some good ones that give, okay, okay, I can do that. And then that will be our next work session, and I'll try to have that out the first of next week to everyone. So then you have a solid week to come prepared to the next work session.
I'll, I'll bring my bullets to the next meeting. If we've run out of time, you know, I doubt we will.
I'm great with that. Uh, Greg?
Nothing other than the homework I was given today.
Darren?
Nothing today, nothing today.
I don't have anything either. The only thing, and maybe I can give all of you guys my cellphone, but I do need to know if you're going to miss a meeting. I need to be aware, and I'm not sure if other people told Ted and, or not, but I just need to be aware, cause sometimes like tonight, I was worried, like if someone didn't show up, we're already down two members, so just if you're going to be missing a meeting, an email or a text or something, would be awesome ahead of time. And I'm sure you guys are all good at that, but. That's all I have. Now you can make your motion.
Our motion will adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Greg, second by Darren. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're done. Thank you, guys. Just the, I think it's February ninth, and it just at the top it said Brandon and Steve, maybe? Hold on. Whoops.
Yeah, I think it was Brandon and Steve.
Did you get it? Were excused. I'd like some smaller computers so I can see.
What's your number, Geneva, so we can tell? What's your number, Geneva, so we can text you if we're.
Okay, you ready for it?